In partnership with parents and the community, Birmingham Public Schools will provide educational excellence that empower students to cultivate their individual brilliance and positively impact the world.
Good evening and welcome. Today is Tuesday, August 26, 2025, and this is a meeting of the Birmingham Public Schools Board of Education. Our first order of business is roll call. Tracy?
Trustee Angelina. Trustee Hokumer?
Here.
Trustee Joseph. Trustee Tajani?
Here.
Trustee Raz?
Here.
Trustee Spencer?
Here.
Trustee Zama?
Here.
Thank you, Tracy. As it's the first meeting of the new school year, I will read our vision in board norms. Our vision is all students in Birmingham will realize their full potential, think critically, and champion an innovative tomorrow. And our board norms are be respectful and reflective, be prepared, no surprises, ask questions to seek and understand opinions, assume positive intent, and understand and respect the role of a trustee. Trustees, do we have any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Seeing none at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Roberson for her superintendent report.
Good morning. Oh, good afternoon. It's been a long day. We had a great Red Apple Breakfast this morning where we had the Groves Chamber Choir perform as well as the Groves Band led by Mrs. Carano and also Mr. Hendry. We had a number of student speakers as well who greeted the teachers in, well, all of our staff in. Our Red Apple Breakfast is our kind of kickoff for the entire year, and we had a number of vendors that we really are appreciative that they were here and they gave a lot of prizes away as well. I do want to just address that earlier, prior to the Red Apple Breakfast, we had a picketing in front of our breakfast, and it was our staff who was concerned about working on an expired contract. Well, we value our staff members, and we have, because of the uncertainty both at the state and federal level, wanted to make sure that our numbers were precise and accurate. And in doing so, we are prepared to continue with negotiations. And I know we will be going into closed session later today to talk about that. And I know that negotiations will continue tomorrow with the Birmingham Education Association. And we're confident that we're going to come to a resolution. As well, we're just excited for the start of the new year. We have a lot of bond activities that have come to fruition and are ready for the start of the new school year. Bingo Farms, I heard that it looks absolutely amazing, the, all of the new renovations there, as well as our parking lot out here at the Grove Staff Parking Lot, Corton Elementary. And then we also have renovated the transportation lot. We're still in the process, and hopefully that will be done by the start of the school year. And so we're just excited for Tuesday, which will be the day we welcome all of our students and staff back to our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Roberson. Trustees, at this time, does anyone have any board comments this evening? Seeing none, we will move into public comment. And before we get started, I will read our public comment policy. Because the Birmingham Board of Education values public meetings, not just meetings in public, we welcome public comment on school issues. Most comments can be concisely stated in three minutes, and the board respectfully asks that comments remain focused on the topic or issue and not on specific personnel. We welcome your comments but cannot discuss nor debate items not on the agenda. When asked to discuss non-agenda items, we can share facts but not engage in discussion. We need to follow laws regarding public notice on issues and be aware that the other community members may not, may have interest in the topic, but without proper notice, may not be present to contribute. Tracy, do we have any public comments?
I have one. I know more were taken. Is there any others that want to be turned in? Somebody took my pen somewhere.
Oh, my, okay, that's on the office table.
Okay. We'll come back and grab that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our first public comment, I would like to invite Cindy Worth to the podium, please. Podium, please, right here.
Hi, everyone. I'm Cindy Worth. I've lived now in the district for about four years. Actually, grew up in Plymouth, Michigan, but lived in New York and San Francisco for about 15 years before I chose Birmingham to move here with my family with three children. So, thank you for the time and allowing me to come up here. I wanted to bring up, along with several families here, the issue of what we learned last week, midweek, three days before school started with the busing situation. For me, it starts first and foremost with our children, and what is right for them, their development, their safety. From there, I honestly move on to then the law, very simply. So when I learned that my five and seven-year-olds were going to have to wait an hour after school with no plan as to what will, what will they do for an hour in order to get home safely from the bus, of which I am a tax-paying resident, I really was sort of shocked. I work out of Detroit at a startup. I decided to move my talents from working in San Francisco Bay area to Detroit, and part of my job is going into the city. And it is critical for me to have a little bit of that buffer time that the bus allowed me last year, or last two years, from 3:25 to 3:40, where I could get there in time, leave the office when they were okay with me leaving the office, to meet my son at the bus stop at 3:40. So now that we have an hour to wait, I am really at a loss as to what to do. So first, I do not think that is putting our children's interests at the top of the list. There is a ton of downstream impact, cost aside to my child, for activities that I'm going to have to move around. But beyond that, the law, Michigan 380.1321 states that if public students are offered transportation, we have to offer the same services to students that are in parochial schools within a 1.5-mile rule. We have families that are 1.7 miles away where the closest parochial school is Holy Name, the school where we attend. So I do not understand how this abides by Michigan law in any way, shape, or form. Also, children who go, who live in Poppleton and go to Harlan are a mile away, and they're offered busing services. So it is not okay that you're transferring the problem with Covington and the cost savings there of reducing that choice time, which is, I know what happened and why now we are being passed the problem to. It's not, it's not equitable. It's not following Michigan law, and it's going to be a problem, and we are going to continue to fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other public comments?
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Rachel Robinson.
Hi, everyone. Rachel Robinson. I am also in the Birmingham Public Schools District, just right up the road in technically Bloomfield Hills. But I do want to echo a lot of what Cindy said in regard to the transportation issue. It does seem, in a lot of ways, that the root of the problem was really around Covington shifting their after-school times. And it seems the problem has just been now transferred to Holy Name and Regis families. And it leaves us in a really unfortunate situation at the 11th hour, where we are now either scrambling for carpooling, finding, you know, alternative after-school activities that we have to pay for out of our pocket at the last minute, or really just having to sacrifice our jobs and leave work early in order to go pick up our kids. And it just seems unfair and inequitable that we are now having to scramble when we've had these busing services as long as I can remember, for the past, I don't know, eight to 10 years, I want to say. It just feels like this was an adjustment for cost savings, but really there seemed to be a lot of semantics going on, and it seems that it's a very broader issue that affects so many different people within the community. It's, it creates problems not only for the children that ride the bus and those particular parents, but also just taxpaying residents within the neighborhoods because of all of the traffic that's going to now be inundating these neighborhoods. I would estimate it probably adds about 50 to 60 cars to these pickup lines, ultimately delaying everyone's dismissal and pickup of their students, affecting after-school activities, athletics, tutoring, and family time suffers as a result. As of, I want to say, 6:00 PM Friday, we did circulate a petition among a lot of the Birmingham Public Schools residents, parents, primarily Holy Name and Regis, but a lot of these parents do have students at both a Birmingham Public School and a private parochial school. And in less than two business days, we have 236 signatures. I think the momentum is going to continue to mount, and it's a problem that I think needs to be addressed. I don't think we can continue to just assess this on an individual case-by-case basis. So we look forward to some better solutions and ways forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dr. Roberson, I would like, if you would, to turn the meeting back over to you.
I have one more.
I'd like to welcome Andrew Robinson to the podium, please.
Fine, thank you. I'll be very brief, less than a minute. Want to thank you all for your time and what you do for the Birmingham Public Schools, but I also would like to thank the ladies who just addressed everyone here and wanted to just echo the sentiment that while we appreciate what you do for the, the community and the schools, we would just ask that you, you look to all of the schools and all the members in the community. And instead of moving this problem that was identified at one school, and that was a burden to a lot of the families at that school, to another group of families, taxpayers in another school. We encourage you to do the right thing and find a solution that's equitable for all Birmingham families and all residents. And we're hopeful that there is a solution, and maybe not the best solution for, for every single family, but a better solution for every family. And that's what we put our hope and our trust in all of you, to find a better way for our kids so they can get home safely to their families at, at the right time, so we can have our family time as well and make sure that all of our kids are safe, instead of passing a problem to one school, to the next school, to the next. Let's fix the problem. We've already identified it. Let's fix it and make it right for everyone. And I'm very hopeful that this is, this is the team and the group that can do that. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Does, do we have other public comment?
We have one more. We ran out of cards. Can we borrow one more card?
Sure.
Anybody else need cards?
I'd like to invite, is it Mary Stefani?
Yes, thank you. Hi, good evening, and thank you for having me today. My name is Mary Noel Stefani, and I'm a Birmingham resident. I'm also a past Holy Name PSO president and a mom of three children at Holy Name. They also ride the bus, and my youngest is eight years old. We also live outside the one-mile walking radius to Holy Name. I am here today to strongly support busing for Holy Name School. The current solution given to us, a 4:30 PM pickup from school, is completely unacceptable. It is not a solution. For example, there is no one to watch our children from 3:20 to 4:30, a total of 70 minutes. This does not even include if the bus is late getting to Holy Name. A few questions. Where are tax dollars going if we cannot provide two school buses for the children who need it to get home from school? How can we justify new sports facilities but not two buses that are required by law for those outside a one-mile walking radius? We are here today to come to the table. We'd like this discussion to continue, and we just feel like it's just started. Please let us know what the immediate steps are, and we'll be following up in the weeks to come. I appreciate your time. And again, we strongly support busing for Holy Name Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes public comment. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Roberson if she could address some of the public comments from this evening.
I just want to provide a little context. Covington's start time moved from 3:15, I mean, end time moved from 3:15 to 3:30. So they've always had an end time that fell between 3:15, was at 3:15. Because our district had prioritized picking students up from the private schools, they, and could not transport BCS students until 4:30, the district had been subsidizing choice hour for students. During our strategic plan, one of the things that came up was from our other families around the district who asked, why are we subsidizing after-school programming for one program when we don't do it for any other program? Didn't seem to be equitable. To resolve that issue, we decided to have transportation during, at the end of the school day, like we do all of the other students, continue choice hour, but that way, choice hour could be a choice for those who decided to keep their students there. That made it now, where we were picking up, are picking up the students for BCS at 4:30, now students at the private school are being picked up at 4:30. We had to subsidize for the last, I don't know how many years, and I understand that it's a hardship and understand that we need to work to solve, to, to come up with a solution. But there is another complexity to it that we're not solving for this year. The other complexity is that the number of students that we transport goes well beyond the legal requirement. According to, in pursuant to Section 1322 of the revised school code, a pupil attending public school or the nearest state-approved non-public school available, to which that non-public school pupil may be admitted, shall be transported along the regular routes as determined by the board to port to public and state-approved non-public schools. What that means is, just like for our students, if they live in the Corton catchment area, we only transport them to Corton. If the student in the Corton catchment area wants to go to Harlan, we allow them to go to Harlan, but we don't transport them to go to Harlan. Right now, a number of the students that we're transporting for private schools, their closest approved, state-approved private school is not the school that they're attending. We are not legally required to transport them to a, we're only legally required to transport them to the private school that isn't the closest to their home and that they can attend. Right? So we wouldn't, for instance, have an elementary school and their closest school is, you know, Marion or a high school. They can't attend a high school. But their closest private school, elementary, that is where we're supposed to transport them. If we only transported those students, this, this list would be cut to a quarter of the students that we transport. That is the solution, but that is not a solution that we were willing to discuss and do right now because it was not enough time. This change in time has been discussed with the school officials, the private school officials since the spring. I believe our business service person and our deputy superintendent started meeting with them in March. And so while I am sorry that that was not communicated to those families, that is something that has been communicated to the school officials. So there are still families that we are legally required to transport, that I see that 4:30 would be a hardship, just as it was for us as well. And we will continue to explore some other solutions. But part of that solution is really the number of students that we're transporting that legally we are not required to transport.
Thank you, Dr. Roberson. Trustees, right now, we will move to our consent agenda, where we have minutes and personnel reports from the last two months. Could I have a motion for Resolution 3, our consent agenda?
I move that we approve Resolution 3, Consent Agenda.
Support.
Moved by trustee Hokumer, supported by trustee Spencer. All those in favor of Resolution 3, our consent agenda approval, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. And I will now turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Heitch for his update.
Good evening, Board of Education and community. I bring before you Resolution 5 for the year, which is acceptance of Miller Johnson, our policy provider, recommendations and updates to the Board of Education bylaws and our policy manual. The updates are language-based in nature to comply with changes to state legislation and deal almost exclusively in our facility and operations in how we have some communications in terms of the community based on Michigan's Safe Storage Law, updates to safety and security language for behavioral threat assessment teams that have in the building, which we are already complying with, school crisis response language, which the Michigan State Police is in the process of coming to a more unified system across the board, and then updates to the American Disabilities Act to help better clarify the difference between if your district has therapy dogs, the difference between a district therapy dog and a service animal that may be required for an individual, one of our staff members, our students, based on ADA. So I bring those forward to you this evening and hope that you are willing to approve.
Thank you. Trustees, are there, could I have a motion, or discussion, sorry, any questions for Mr. Heitch?
I have one question. I, I know trustee Zama had submitted questions.
Yes.
I'm sorry that I didn't do that ahead of time, but my question is about, so the policy mentions the regulations about the therapy dogs. I just want to clarify, are the therapy dogs owned by the district, or are they owned by the handlers?
So the therapy dogs that we provide in all of our schools right now are district-owned therapy dogs. Any service animal that's approved based on an individual's needs through ADA is their own service animal.
Okay, thank you.
Trustees, any other questions before we move? Could I have a motion to waive the first reading of this resolution?
I move to waive the first reading of Resolution 5, Acceptance of Miller Johnson, Attorney's Recommendation and Updates to the Board of Education Bylaws and Policies Manual.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by trustee Zama, seconded by Jason, Mr. Tajani. All those in favor of waiving our first reading of Resolution 5, Acceptance of Miller Johnson, Attorney Recommendations and Updates of our Bylaws and Policies, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes five to zero. Trustees, could I have a motion to accept Resolution 5, Acceptance of Miller Johnson, Attorney Recommendation and Updates? and Updates to our Board of Education Bylaws and Policy Manual?
I move that we approve the Acceptance of Miller Johnson Attorney's Recommendation, Resolution Number 5.
Support.
Moved by Trustee Hokumer, supported by Trustee Spencer. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Now I would like to turn it over to Mr. Territudo for our Business Services Update and Resolution 6.
Thank you. I'm actually going to invite Scott Smith up to the podium to help answer any questions with this particular resolution. It's agreed with Stacy, so that we're not kind of sharing at the same podium. The resolution in front of the board is a construction contingency adjustment for paving improvements at the Transportation Center. So to provide a little context for this resolution, as we were doing paving improvements and we were excavating the area at the transportation lot, it was discovered that the lot itself and the soil beneath had been contaminated from the site prior to the purchase from Birmingham Public Schools. That is necessitating some additional costs because that contaminated soil is required to be disposed of properly. And we have been working with an environmental consultant to make sure we are following the rules and regulations set forth by Eagle and the state. So with that comes some additional costs that were unexpected in terms of the scope of this project when it was first headed approved back in March 17th of 2025. And this resolution is really asking for an adjustment on the construction contingency to make sure that the project continues to move forward. Our governing documents for construction work requires the notification and approval of the board for any of these kinds of contingency adjustments. And so we are asking for the increase of the construction contingency of $285,000 to maintain the work that is going on in the transportation lot to ensure that it is complete and ready for the students' first day back at school.
Thank you.
And we'll, I guess, sorry, also add, as part of our Bond Oversight Committee, we did discuss this in, at great length and detail with that committee to make sure that all the questions were asked and that the situation's been fully understood by the committee.
Thank you. Trustee Zammatt and I were on that call last Friday for quite a while, so we definitely asked a lot of questions. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith or Mr. Territudo regarding the construction contingency?
I have a motion for Resolution 6, Construction Contingency Adjustment for Paving Improvements at the Transportation Center.
I'm moving to accept Resolution 6, Construction Contingency Adjustment for Paving Improvements at the Transportation Center.
Support.
Moved by Trustee Zammatt, supported by Trustee Tajani. All those in favor of Resolution 6, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we will move into our Technology Report, and I will turn it over to Mr. Riley Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board, today for your consideration. I have Bid Pack T-14. This is two projects throughout our district, two. One is an ERCES system. This is essentially radio boosters for first responders' radios so they can communicate effectively inside of our schools in the event of emergency. It's a common thing that inside of buildings, first responders have dead spots and can't communicate with each other or their dispatch. So we'll be outfitting our district with boosters so that they can have those communications in the event of emergency. That also includes replacement of our internal radios and the addition of a system to allow our schools to talk to each other through their radios, just to increase efficiency and allow for collaboration. It also is a replacement or an upgrade of our intrusion detection system. That's obviously our burglar alarms that arm all of our buildings and all of our access points. But also part of that is a, a piece that monitors all of our facilities equipment, excuse me. So it's subpumps, sprinkler heads, boiler systems, et cetera, so that our facilities department can be aware of any problems before they potentially impact students. So it's, both of these will be funded, funded through the bond, and were discussed with the bond committee.
Thank you. Trustees, are there any questions for Mr. Riley Kelly?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So today, if a first responder was in our building, they would still be able to communicate, but there might just be certain areas, right?
That's correct, yes.
So we do have something, we're just improving it.
Yeah, it would, they would be subject to just whatever service that they get throughout the, the district. And it really depends on where they are in the building.
Like my cellphone at BCS.
Correct, exactly.
Trustees?
Any other questions, trustees, for Mr. Riley Kelly?
May, I have a motion for Resolution 7, Award Contract for Bid Package T-14.
I move to approve Resolution 7, Approve Contract for Bid Package T-14.
Support.
Moved by Trustee Tajani, supported by Trustee Hokumer. All those in favor of Resolution 7, Award Contract for Bid Package T-14, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Trustees, now we will, I will ask for a motion in a minute to convene into closed session. I want to remind everyone for our closed session, for the strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreement, if either negotiating party requests a closed hearing. I do need a motion, and then we will do a roll call vote.
I move that we move into closed session.
Support.
Moved by Trustee Hokumer, supported by Trustee Zammatt. I will ask for a roll call vote. Trustee Zammatt? Uh, yes, support.
Trustee Hokumer?
Yeah.
Trustee Spencer?
Yeah.
Trustee Tajani?
Yes.
And Trustee Ras, yes. Motion passes five to zero. We will move into closed session at 6:32.